Good afternoon and welcome to the stated meeting of February 16th, 2023. A happy belated Valentine's Day to everybody. I am Majority Leader Keith Powers. I'd like to thank you all for joining us here today. If you'd like to follow along, the agenda for today's meeting is posted on our website.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please call the roll call.
Abreu.
Present.
Ariola. Aviles.
Presente.
Ayala.
Here.
Baron.
Here, they got me seated way in the back. I'm back here. Could you see me?
Thank you, Councilmember.
I just want to let them know you put me in the back. That's all.
We see you.
Botcher.
We also hear you.
Here.
Brandon.
Here.
Brewer. Brooks Powers. Caban.
Present.
Carr. De La Rosa.
Here.
Dinowitz.
Present.
Farias. Felice.
Presente.
Gennaro.
Here.
Gutierrez.
Presente.
Hanif.
Here.
Hanks.
Present.
Holden.
I'm here.
Carr.
Here.
Hudson.
Here.
Joseph.
Present.
Kagan.
Here.
Krishnan.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Lewis.
Present.
Marte.
Here.
Mealy. Menon.
Here.
Moya.
Here.
Narcisse.
Present.
Nurse.
Here.
Osay.
Present.
Palladino. Brewer. Wrestler.
Here.
Richardson Jordan.
Present.
Riley.
Present.
Ariola.
Here.
Rivera. Salamanca.
Present.
Sanchez.
Present.
Shulman.
Here.
Mealy.
Present.
Stevens.
Here.
Ung.
Present.
Velasquez.
Present.
Vernikoff.
Here.
Williams.
Present.
Wan.
Here.
Jaeger.
Here.
Morelli.
Present.
Powers.
I'm here.
Speaker Adams.
Present.
invocation.
None.
Thank you. We'll now have the adoption of the minutes by Councilmember Jim Gennaro.
I make a motion that the minutes of the stated meeting of January 19th, 2023 be adopted as printed.
Thank you. We'll now go to messages and papers from the mayor.
None.
Communication from city, county, and borough offices.
None.
Petitions and communications.
None.
Land use call-ups.
None.
Thank you. And we're going to, before we head over, I just want to welcome, I see we have Assemblymember Rajkumar upstairs, and I also want to welcome Arrow Lewis and his students here as well today. If we could welcome them to the City Council Chamber. Thank you for being with us here today. We'll now go to communication from Speaker Adrian Adams.
Thank you, Majority Leader, very much, and good afternoon once again, everyone. I hope you all had a very good Valentine's Day with your loved ones. I'd like to begin today by encouraging all New Yorkers of the continued importance of being fully vaccinated and getting your latest booster shots to protect yourselves and your loved ones from COVID-19. Before I continue, I want to take a moment to remember the life of NYPD Officer Adid Faez, who was laid to rest last week. Officer Faez was a beloved father, son, and dedicated public servant. As a city, we're still mourning his loss, and we send our thoughts and condolences to his family and loved ones during this very difficult time. I also want to acknowledge the at least eight New Yorkers who were injured and one person who was killed when a U-Haul truck was driven into pedestrians in southern Brooklyn. We extend our thoughts to the family and loved ones of Yi Ji Yi, a 44-year-old delivery worker and single father of three boys who lost his life senselessly. We're also praying for a full and speedy recovery for those who were injured after this terrible incident. And as we do during every other stated meeting, I want to take a second to honor the lives of New Yorkers who died in their workplace. This week, we're sending our love to the family of Carlos Garcia Ramos, a 38-year-old delivery worker from Washington Heights who was tragically killed while on the job. Colleagues, please join me in a moment of silence to remember Officer Adid Faez, Yi Ji Yi, Carlos Garcia Ramos, and every other New Yorker who lost their lives since we were last together. Thank you. As we talk about safety and violence, whether it's gun violence, traffic violence, or even workplace safety, we must acknowledge the lack of safety that many communities still face. Black communities and communities of color have endured violence and trauma, even when headlines focused on record levels of safety in our city and too often lacked investments in supporting their health and safety. People with mental health and addiction challenges do not have the adequate access to treatment. Crime victims in communities experiencing the most violence lack access to victim services and trauma recovery. We have not scaled up the community safety investments that can make us safer, and it must not just be a focus, but it has to be a commitment that we make. The path to improving public safety is by investing in community-based safety solutions that prevent crime before it happens. The Council is committed to advancing safety for all of our neighborhoods, and I look forward to our continued work to achieve this outcome that all New Yorkers deserve. Yesterday, the Council's Committee on Education heard hours of testimony from advocates, providers, and parents on how our city's 3K and early childhood education programs are not being supported by the city to meet the needs of working families and children. There is an immense need for these programs across our city that improve children's educational outcomes and help our working families thrive. It is clear that the DOE has not administered these programs effectively, but the answer cannot be to reduce our investments. As a city government, we have to fix the bureaucratic management issues to get it right for our children, providers, families, and communities. We will be focused on advancing solutions to improve the administration of 3K and protecting investments in it. Caregivers must have a safe, must have safe places that they can entrust with the care and education of their children, and the city must support the programs and providers delivering those services. Well, we have a few holidays to highlight this week. February 12th was NAACP Day, observed annually in celebration of the day the NAACP was formed in 1909. As the first and oldest civil rights organization in our country, we would not be here today without the work and advocacy of the NAACP and its chapters across the country. Yesterday, February 14th, nope, that wasn't yesterday, guys. February 14th was National Black Literacy Day, which was established to focus on the importance of raising literacy rates in our communities. It was launched by D.L. Mullin, the first Black woman to own a bookstore in the city of Chicago. As a lifelong lover of literature, I want to uplift the power of literacy as a way to empower our communities and share their own stories and narratives. February 14th was also National Donor Day, a time dedicated to spreading awareness and education about organ, eye, and tissue donations. We thank all of the donors who make the lifesaving choice to help others in need. Your generosity and kindness are truly appreciated. Tomorrow is Casavo Independence Day in commemoration of the Declaration of Casavo as an independent nation in 2008. Earlier this week, the Council hosted a Casavo Independence Day celebration right here in the chambers. I want to thank Councilmembers Morelli, Carr, Felice, Holden, Palladino, and Velasquez for hosting this event. On February 23rd, our Guyanese communities will be celebrating their Republic Day. As the representative for Council District 28, the Great 28, I'm proud to have passed the bill that led to the co-naming of Little Guyana Avenue. So to our Guyanese communities here in New York City and across the world, Happy Guyana Republic Day. On February 18th, we will mark the annual Hindu Festival of Mahashivaritri, also known as the Great Night of Shiva. Hindus throughout our city and the world will gather to remember Shiva with prayers, fasting, and meditation, and on February 22nd, Christians will be observing Ash Wednesday, marking the start of Lent, a period for fasting and penance. Finally, please join me in congratulating our colleague, Councilmember Carlina Rivera and her family on the birth of their healthy baby boy. I'm excited to be an auntie again, and we're so excited to welcome a new member of our extended council family. This is the council with the largest number of new babies in history. We celebrate Councilmember Rivera. Congratulations and many blessings, and we're also proud to be the first council to have created a beautiful lactation room. Now we can move on to our stated agenda. First, we will vote on the following finance items. A transparency resolution approving new designations and changes of certain organizations receiving funding in the expense budget. Next, we'll vote on the following resolutions. Resolution 164, sponsored by Councilmember Linda Lee, calls on the New York City Department of Education to establish Diwali as an official holiday for New York City public school students. With over 227,000 New Yorkers who identify as Indian-American, this holiday, which celebrates light over darkness, is an immensely significant and meaningful festival for Hindu, Jain, and Sikh communities. The inclusion of Diwali as a school holiday would signify that our students will no longer have to choose between their faith and their culture and their education. We continue to support the legislative efforts of our state partners in advocating for the Diwali holiday, and since she is in the room, Assemblymember Rajkumar, we salute you for your legislation. We thank you to our staff, Jan Atwell, for your work on this. Resolution 474, co-sponsored by Councilmembers Amanda Farias and Shahana Hanif, recognizes February 21st as Mother Language Day in the city of New York. All right. Bangladeshis are one of the fastest-growing immigrant groups in New York City, with more than 65,000 Bangladeshi Americans who call New York City home, more than in any other city in the United States. Mother Language Day honors the importance of the Bengali Bangla language to Bangladeshis in our cities and around the world, and promotes the acceptance of this linguistic and cultural diversity in our communities. We want to thank Regina Paul and Brenda McKinney for your work on this legislation. Resolution 486, sponsored by Councilmember Althea Stevens, recognizes February 15th as Black Girl Magic Day in the city of New York. On this day, we acknowledge the accomplishments of Black women and the issues we face. Black women immensely contribute to the social, economic, cultural, and political fabric of our city and to the nation. Thank you to our staff members Regina Paul and Brenda McKinney for your work on this legislation. Resolution 488, co-sponsored by Councilmembers Nantasha Williams and Selvina Brooks-Powers, recognizes the contributions of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated to public service by designating March 3 annually as Delta Day in the city of New York. Our city is the home of the first graduate chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Incorporated, which also includes legendary Brooklynite Shirley Chisholm, the first Black woman elected to Congress, and now include some New York City Council members. We thank them. Oh, I said if I heard that news, I was going to shut it down. We thank you. We truly thank you for your advocacy and positive impact on our communities, especially in Black communities. The extraordinary work of this organization cannot be heralded anymore. We thank you for your contributions, and thank you, Deltas, and you beautiful crimson and cream up there. Thank you, staff Regina Paul and Brenda McKinney for your work on this legislation. Next, we'll vote on the following bills. Introduction 897, sponsored by Parks Committee Chair Shekhar Krishnan, would co-name 129 city streets and public places in honor of extraordinary individuals and communities based on the requests of Councilmembers whose districts include the location. While there are many names worth highlighting in this omnibus bill, I do want to note one in particular because of his role in our body, as well as across the city and state. That is former Councilmember and Assemblymember Al Van. Dr. Van was a dedicated public servant, educator, community activist, and leader who fought for the empowerment of Black communities in Brooklyn and across our entire city and state. He was a champion for Central Brooklyn and its neighborhoods of Bedford-Stuyvesant, where he was raised and that he represented in the State Assembly and here in the City Council. He served as a public school teacher and administrator in the neighborhood before representing it for nearly four decades in elected office. He was a giant who focused on community institution building and mentorship for so many public servants. Al Van the Man, as he was affectionately known, garnered immense respect. I'm proud. We're honoring his profound life in legacy as a city by co-naming the street of his home and a school he taught in as Honorable Dr. Albert Van Way in Brooklyn. So many of us are here in this body because of his efforts, and it is fitting that we advance this street co-naming during Black History Month. His grandchildren are here in City Council Chambers with us today to celebrate this moment, and I want to publicly acknowledge them. Thank you to our staff members Christopher Sartorian, Patrick Mulvaughill, for your work. Introduction 886, sponsored by Majority Leader Keith Powers, would extend a moratorium on violations issued to owners who have noncompliant signs that depict their businesses and extend an assistance program to correct signage issues. Thank you to our staff, Audrey Sun. Next, Introduction 148A, sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannan, would amend the New York City Human Rights Law to recognize economic abuse as a form of domestic violence. This bill extends the existing protections against discrimination for survivors of domestic violence to people who have experienced economic abuse. This would include behavior that controls, obstructs, or interferes with a person's ability to use or maintain economic resources they're entitled to or to acquire economic resources. We thank our staff, Jayasari Ganapathy and William Diore for your work, Brenda McKinney and Rachel Cordero as well. Finally, Introduction 470A, sponsored by Environmental Protection Committee Chair Jim Gennaro, would establish an accelerated timeline for prohibiting the burning of fuel oil grade number four in boilers across the city. Although the city has made progress in our efforts to improve air quality and phase out dirty fuel oils, the environmental benefits have not been equitably distributed. More than half of buildings that use number four fuel oil and 65% of schools that use number four fuel oil are in environmental justice communities. By further reducing carbon dioxide emissions and lessening the fine particulate matter in our air, we can significantly benefit the health and well-being of New Yorkers. Introduction 470A would require the phasing out of number four fuel oil in city-owned schools and buildings by July 1, 2025, and would prohibit its use after July 1, 2027 for all other buildings in the city, and we thank our staff, Andrew Born, Malak Neshserin, Brad Reed, Samara Swanson, and Ricky Chala. Thank you all for your attention, and now I turn it back into the hands of our Majority Leader.
Thank you, and we are now going to move into the discussion of general orders. I'll call you in order of sign up. We're going to start first with Councilmember Gennaro, and will be followed by Councilmember Baron.
Thank you, Mr. Leader. I'd like to speak about Intro 470A, which would hasten the phase-out of the burning of heating oil number four from public and private buildings. But to fully grasp the bill, one must understand what number four fuel is in the Council's actions on number four fuel to date. There used to be three grades of heating oil in the city, number two, number four, and number six. Two is the most common and cleanest of the grades of heating oil. Number six is the most polluting oil grade by far, and this council in 2010 began a five-year phase-out of number six. Number six is long gone. Number four oil is a blend of number two and number six, and in 2010, when we banned number six, the council by local law greatly reduced the sulfur content of number four fuel by two-thirds, from 4,500 parts per million of sulfur down to 1,500 parts per million. That made number four much cleaner, but it still had a significant amount of sulfur, plus some heavy metals and other things we shouldn't be putting into the air. With that in mind, number four was set to be phased out by 2030. The administration set that phase-out date by rule in 2011, and in 2015, the council codified the 2030 date law to make sure that number four did indeed phase out by 2030. That's the history. And the rationale for this bill today is that we're not in a good place with regard to the ongoing phase-out of number four. Despite only 0.3 of all buildings in the city burning number four oil, 25% of New York City public schools burn number four, which is obscene, and to make matters even worse, 66% of the public schools that burn number four are in EJ communities. And of the other buildings that burn number four, 52 are in, 52% are in EJ communities. Intro 470 would remedy that. Number four oil would be out of every New York City public school by 2025, and regarding the phase-out of number four oil from the other 3,000 buildings that use it as a primary or secondary fuel, no more, no more number four oil permit renewals will be allowed after June 30 of 2024. So those buildings will phase out number four between 2024 and 2027. And the bill has a penalty structure for noncompliance that says we mean business, but there's also a hardship provision in the bill. So the bill is comprehensive, tough, yet fair. I urge all my colleagues to support Intro 470A. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the extra time.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gennaro. Congratulations on that bill. I know you've been working on this issue for quite a long time. We'll go now to Councilmember Baron, and will be followed by Councilmember Ariola.
Thank you very much, my colleagues. I rise to honor the street naming of three elderly individuals in my community, Jopola James Way, Juanita Caballaro Way, and Myrtle McKinney Way. These young ladies, who they call elderly, served our community well, and they were killed unnecessarily, and we want to honor them with the street name. And also, Dr. Al Van was a good friend of mine, and we want to honor that. Clipper Glover, the 10-year-old that was shot down by police. We're naming it after him. And importantly, the honorable Elijah Muhammad. And I want to rise to say it is the honorable Elijah Muhammad who brought so much hope to our people in prison, in poverty. It is the honorable Elijah Muhammad that brought high self-esteem to our people. And some were resisting to this and want to give credit where credit is due to the Speaker for supporting this whole idea of these street namings. And for those who are against the honorable Elijah Muhammad, and you're all right with Washington Avenue, Jefferson Street, slave-holding pedophiles of our people, or we can have Skank Avenue in East New York, a slaveholder, Van Sicklin Avenue, a slaveholder. I can spend the rest of my 30-some-odd seconds naming all the street names after racist, dirty, low-down slaveholders, and you said nothing. But when it came to the honorable Elijah Muhammad, there was some resistance. But I am glad that this body didn't allow for that contradiction of resistance to take place, and this body saw it fit to honor the honorable Elijah Muhammad and his student minister, the honorable Louis Minister Farrakhan, who brought nearly 2 million people to Washington, DC, more than any other leader in the history of this country.
Thank you, Councilmember Baron. We will now hear from Councilor, guys. We have now Councilmember Ariola, followed by Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. I'm thrilled to have four street co-namings on today's agenda, the first being Little Bangladeshi Way. The Bangladeshi community in the 32nd Council District is a vibrant part of our district. They're small business owners, religious and civic leaders, and have made a tremendous contribution to our city and state. The second is Joseph Jojo Datoma Way. It is in loving memory of Joseph Jojo Datoma that we do this street co-naming. He passed at the young age of 18 due to a rare form of cancer. Jojo spent his 18 years teaching the children of our community soccer and sharing his love of the sport, even though he was so gravely ill. The third is Valentina's Way. This particular street naming is very close to me and my family because Valentina Allen's family and Valentina are considerate extended family to mine. She was only two years old when she was diagnosed with a rare, I'm sorry, she passed at two years old from a rare childhood heart disease, hypoplastic left heart syndrome. In her two short years, Valentina inspired a force of supporters who have come to be known as Team Valentina, and her spirit continues to shine throughout our community as everyone bands together with her family to continue to raise money to fight against children's heart disease. And finally, the fourth street co-naming is in loving memory of a hero, a member of the FDNY firefighter Timothy Klein, who made the ultimate sacrifice last April while protecting the residents of New York City. May Valentina and Timothy and Joseph rest in God's eternal peace, and their families find solace in knowing that their loved ones are not forgotten. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Lee, followed by Councilmember Krishnan.
Thank you. Today, I'm proud to co-name, mention two street co-namings, co-naming the intersection of 197th Street and 91st Avenue, Lieutenant Robert Cruz Way. Lieutenant Robert Cruz was a 16-year member of the FDNY who served for many years at Engine Company 301, fondly known as the Hollis Hogs. After his promotion to lieutenant, Robert Cruz worked with Battalion 7. We lost the lieutenant during a sudden and tragic medical episode last February. He is survived by his wife Lauren, son Noah, daughter Lydia, Grace, parents Robert Cruz, and Nadine Torres, brother Andrew, sister Rebecca, and several extended family and friends. I'm also privileged to co-name the intersection of 67th Avenue and 192nd Street in honor of Sylvia Weprin, a pillar of our Eastern Queens community. A native of Havana, Cuba, Sylvia would attend Brooklyn College, where she would meet her husband, Assembly Speaker Saul Weprin. A natural teacher, Sylvia would go on to mentor multiple elected officials and serve on the boards of the Queens Botanical Garden and the Queens Symphony Orchestra, Community Board 8, and the Bridge to Medicine Program with CUNY Medical School. Two of her sons, Mark and David, served in the City Council and New York State Assembly, and I'm proud to be carrying on that legend and that seat. Sylvia Weprin's influence has greatly contributed to the advancement and well-being of Eastern Queens, of the Eastern Queens we know today, and I'm proud to commemorate her life of service and leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Krishnan, followed by Councilmember Osay.
Thank you so much, Majority Leader. I wanted to speak today on three street namings in my district that I'm very proud about as part of our legislation of Intro 897. One piece of legislation is to rename 73rd Street Bangadish Street in Jackson Heights, which would, Bangadish Street for 73rd Street would honor the Bangladeshi community of Jackson Heights and of our city and recognize the contributions they have made and continue to make to our neighborhood of Jackson Heights, Queens more generally, and all of New York City. 73rd Street in Jackson Heights is the heart of a Bangladeshi community, reflecting so powerfully its vibrant culture and its, the immense so powerfully its vibrant culture and its immense power and presence that our Bangladeshi community has in my district and across New York. I am so proud to work with so many community leaders and activists and neighbors in our Bangladeshi community to host this street co-naming. Another co-naming would recognize John Brown Way in Elmhurst, which would honor John Brown, an Irish immigrant who served in the U.S. Army and later became a local business and civic leader, who engaged in providing needed aid to other immigrants and countless charitable activities. We are so grateful for all of his service to the community over the years of his life, and I'm proud to announce this co-naming today. Finally, Asif Rahman Way would honor Asif Rahman, who tragically died at the young age of 22 when he was struck by a freight truck on Queens Boulevard. Asif was a Bangladeshi immigrant who excelled in school and was a graduate of Queens College. His tragic death spurred his mother, Lizzie Rahman, to create a campaign to make Queens Boulevard safer. As a result, over 10,000 people, hundreds of businesses, and dozens of organizations have supported the campaign by signing petitions, participating in community design workshops and local rallies, all of which have helped to make changes to the Queens Boulevard, resulting in a safer street for pedestrians. Queens Boulevard was once known as the Boulevard, the number-one Boulevard of Death in the borough of Queens, and it's because of the work of so many leaders like Mother Lizzie Rahman that it's become so much safer. I'm proud about this co-naming today, and know that the work to make safe streets in New York City continues in the memory and legacy of Asif Rahman and his family. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Ose, followed by Councilmember Kagan.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I have two amazing street co-namings to speak about today. Bed-Stuy and Crown Heights are communities of faith. Many people in the northern part of my district, including Marcy and Tompkins Houses, grew up and were called to faith under the leadership of Daniel Webster Botts. It is my honor to both introduce and to now sign into a co-naming the name of Daniel Webster Botts. At the time of his passing, D.W. Botts was the pastor at the Greater Free Gift Baptist Church. D.W. Botts was more than a religious leader in my community. He was the chairman of the Advisory Council of the Eastern Baptist Association of New York, president of the Baptist Pastors and Churches Union of Brooklyn and Long Island, and vice president of the Brooklyn Baptist Evangelical Union. He was an all-around outstanding preacher, teacher, advisor, and counselor in church policy practices and doctrine. He was devoted to the church, community, state, and nation. His legacy and the seeds that he planted to live on in the Cathedral of Greater Free Gift led by Bishop William Raymond Whitaker. I also have the honor of putting in the co-naming for the Honorable Albert Van, a political bedrock, political giant, super-special, and the original Mr. Cool, Van the Man, hometown hero, the original progressive, the man who spurred the black political movement in Brooklyn. These are just some of the words that have been used to describe the late and great Dr. Albert Van. This is a body that knows all about Dr. Van's commitments and investments in his home of Bed-Stuy and Crown Heights and in this city. After all, he was a true pioneer. Al Van sat in this very room as the member elected to the 36th City Council District and in Albany as a New York State legislator, having served us as a legislator from 1975 to 2012. When we talk about the hope and dream of a people, Al Van is an example. He arrived to New York from North Carolina during the Great Migration, and like many people of his day, he took full advantage of what New York City had to offer. Al Van is a founder of Medgar Everest College, former chair of African-American Teacher Association, and the founder of Vanguard Independent Democratic Association, which continues to be one of the most influential and important political organizations of our time. May all who walk our streets look up and see the name of our hometown hero, Al Van, pioneer of political black Brooklyn. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from... Folks can just... I know everybody's very excited. Hold your applause. If you want to do something else, it's totally fine. We'll go now to Councilmember Kagan, and then we'll go to Councilmember Narcisse.
Thank you. It is my privilege and honor today to talk about Jimmy Prince, and I'm honored to make sure that Jimmy Prince Way will exist on Mermaid Avenue in Coney Island. Jimmy Prince was the kindest man in the world and the brightest light in Coney Island. He personified compassion, love, and respect for the community. There was no one like him. He was born in 1932, the same year that Major Market opened on Mermaid Avenue. Jimmy began working at the market in June of 1949 at the age of 18, and worked there for the next 60 years. Eventually, he owned the store and kept it open seven days a week, 12 hours a day, until his retirement in 2009. Jimmy became known as Mr. Major, and his store became the heart of Coney Island, a refuge during hard times where people came to find warmth and solace and nourishment. He gave respect and received love in return. Jimmy Prince kept the store open long after most local businesses were closing or moving. He installed a bench in front of his store where people could relax. He never turned anyone away, whether or not they could pay. He provided affordable, healthy food, and he personally made deliveries to elderly and disabled customers, usually adding a surprise snack that he knew they really liked. Jimmy retired, but still attended community events, sponsored them, and also became a volunteer at the Coney Island History Project. Former customers would come to visit and chat with him on weekends. He was always the hardest worker at beach cleanups on Coney Island Creek, and amazingly, he still made some food deliveries to his oldest customers, all at his own expense. When Jimmy Prince passed away, there was much sadness in the community. Everyone who knew him knew how special he was and how there would never be again anyone like Mr. Major and his wonderful store. It is extremely important to honor the memory of Jimmy Prince, the hard-working, selfless, caring, generous, beautiful prince of Mermaid Avenue. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Narcisse, followed by Councilmember Schulman.
Hi. Thank you, Leader. I am proud today to pass the... to be part of the passing the legislation and to honor the five individuals in my district, 46th District, who everlasting impact our own community. Ethan Holder was a young assistant teacher in the Council District and was gunned down daytime outside of the school. And Ethan is a young man that wanted to do better for the community, helping those children in needs. And while he was just, I mean, putting those children on the bus to go home, he turned around going to a store, and he was gunned down. And we will never forget that. So I thank you for helping me to make sure that he was never forgotten and to show the iniquities in our community and the gun violence that we will never forget, and we need to make a difference. And Charles Roger is a man that was standing in Canarsie, make sure everyone has a newspaper. He was ready to go to everyone's home to know what's going on and to put it in the forefront for the Canarsians. 15-year-old Caitlin was a nice sweetheart, but cancer took her away. So we will never forget the effort that she made to make a difference for her little time on this planet, feeding the people, making sure that she volunteered for the seniors in schools. So we were blessed to have her in a short time. And New York City brave est, the firefighter Stephen Polard, which everyone probably remember, is our hero who died in the line of duty in 2019. And we can never forget the work that he had done in our community, especially in the 46th District. Lastly, Haitian immigrant and Canarsie resident Sergeant Mario Nelson died in Iraq, which most people don't want to fight war, but he did not go against. He went in and served his country. He died. He was indeed a Haitian warrior, and the street sign dedicated will have his name in honor of his work for the country. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now...
I want my colleague to support. That's the last one.
Thank you. Now here from Councilmember Schulman, and then we'll go to remote for Councilmember Holden.
Thank you very much. I'm very proud to sponsor the co-naming of the intersection of Metropolitan Avenue and 85th Avenue in District 29, Queens, as Rabbi Moshe Newman Way. Rabbi Newman was a very dedicated spiritual leader, admired academic scholar, and school principal. He founded the Beis Yaakov Academy of Q Gardens, Queens, a school for girls of the Jewish faith, and was the principal of the school for many years. And actually, where the intersection is, is where the school is located. He was an enthusiastic individual who dedicated services to community and people and won the admiration of those around him. He contributed as a dedicated spiritual leader, academic scholar, and devoted citizen, and he had many... spent many years in the community. And with that, you know, I'm very proud to sponsor this, and thank you, everyone, for voting for it. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, last but not least, we'll hear from Councilmember Holden on remote.
Thank you, Majority Leader, and I'm happy to introduce two street co-namings in the Woodhaven section of my district. First is American Legion Square at the corner of Rockaway Boulevard and Elder Lane. In 1930, this area was designated as Legion Square by the Board of Aldermen of the City of New York. And for many years, Woodhaven's Memorial Day Parade started here, and many people forgot about it. So today, we pay honors and respect to our veterans by restoring the name Legion Square by co-naming this intersection Legion Square or American Legion Square. The second street naming... co-naming is Max Rosner Way. This... and I'm particularly proud of this one, too. This is co-naming. We'll recognize the historical Dexter Park, which was the home to semi-pro baseball starting in 1889 and ending around 1956. And for many years, Dexter Park was home of the Brooklyn Bushwicks, who played host to many teams and traveling teams around the country and made up of all-stars from the major leagues. Many of the greatest ballplayers of all time came here to Woodhaven to play baseball, like Babe Ruth and Josh Gibson. The Bushwicks and Dexter Park were owned by Max Rosner, an immigrant from Hungary, who was a beloved figure in Woodhaven and always loaning out the ballpark for charitable events, and especially during World War II. Dexter Park was one of the first stadiums in the U.S. to play night baseball. Years before, it was common in the major leagues. So it's great that we honor renaming Dexter Court and 86th Road after him. Thank you. Thank you, Majority Leader.
Thank you. Not seeing anyone else signed up right now. Hold on one second. We will move into the report of special committees.
None.
Reports of standing committees.
Report of the Committee on Civil and Human Rights, Intro 148A, expanding the definition of domestic violence victim.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Environmental Protection, Intro 470A, fuel oil grade number four.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Finance, Preconsidered Reso 502 Transparency Resolution.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Housing and Buildings, Intro 886, accessory signs.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Parks and Recreation, Intro 897, naming of 129 thorough affairs in public places.
Coupled on general orders.
On the general orders calendar, resolution appointing various persons commissioner of deeds.
Coupled on general orders, I would now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on all of the items coupled on today's general orders calendar.
Abreu.
Aye.
Ariola.
I'm a no on preconsidered Reso 502 and Intro 470A. I'm an aye on all others, and I have to disclose on the record that my son works for sanitation.
Thank you. Aviles.
Aye on all.
Ayala.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye on all.
Bacher.
Aye.
Aye.
Brewer.
Aye.
Thank you. Brooks Powers.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
I'd like to take a moment to recognize a few of the street co-namings that I have sponsored, including that of Donnie Small Senior Way, Raquan M. Elliott, also known as Stack Bundles Way, who has contributed to the musical culture in this state and country, Alvin Benjamin Way, as well as St. John's Episcopal Way. St. John's especially I want to highlight with the work and service of the staff at St. John's Hospital, our only hospital in the Far Rockaway community that was the epicenter of COVID-19. So I encourage my colleagues to vote aye, and with that, I vote aye on all. Thank you.
Thank you. Kaban.
Aye on all.
Carr.
I'd like to disclose on the record that we're funding CUNY in the transparency resolution today, and my spouse is a student at CUNY. And with that said, I'll be voting no on preconsidered resolution 502 and introduction 470A. An aye on the rest. Thank you.
Thank you. De La Rosa.
A moment to explain my vote.
Go ahead.
I just want to acknowledge, I spoke about it last week, last stated, I mean, but today we're voting on a street co-naming for John Collado, who was a neighbor who was killed by police in my district in 2011. John was a father, a grandfather. He was someone who everyone knew on the block where I grew up, and he was murdered by police officers in 2011 on my street. And so I want to honor his memory and the memory that he left for our community, and I vote aye on all. Thank you.
Thank you. Dinowitz.
Yes.
Farias.
I vote aye on all.
Feliz.
Aye.
Gennaro.
Mr. Leader, I ask permission to explain my vote.
Go ahead.
I just want to... One of the streets is going to be named for Sylvia Weprin. She and her husband Saul were mentors of mine, and I'm so glad that she's being honored by the street co-naming. And I had to keep my remarks on my bill short, so I stay within the two minutes, but I do certainly want to thank the Speaker for her... everything that she put behind 470, the members of the committee, the 40 cosponsors, you know, Jeremy John, Faisal Lee, you know, Jeff Baker, Andrea Vasquez, Brad Reed, Malik Nasserdeen, Samara Swanson, Ricky Chala, Andrew Born, Andrew Lane Lawless, and my own staff, Henry M., Natalia Kazakawa, Matt Malloy, and last but not least, my LD, Nabi Cor, who is sitting right behind me, who is the greatest LD who ever lived. We're very proud to have her on my staff. So thank you, Nabi. Thank you, everyone. I should vote, too, right?
We'll take your vote as well.
Yeah. I vote aye.
Thank you, Councilman. Gutierrez.
Aye.
Hanif.
I'd like to disclose on the record that my fiance is affiliated with an organization that we fund, the New York Immigration Coalition, and I...
Not going to get used to that.
Permission to explain my vote. Thank you, Mr. Majority Leader. I am also excited to mention three street co-namings that I've sponsored of three tireless advocates for North Shore. Ms. Jennifer Brumskine Gray, an amazing and fierce advocate for the African and Liberian community; Mr. Joseph Carroll, who served as the community board, one district manager for 39 years; and lastly, my pastor, my friend, my mentor, Mr. James L. Seawood. I am very proud to be sponsoring these street co-namings. Thank you very much, and I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Holden.
Aye on all.
Hudson.
Aye on all, and I'd like to disclose on the record that my partner is employed by Planned Parenthood, which is in the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph.
Aye on all.
Kagan.
I would like to disclose that my daughter is a student at CUNY College, and we're funding CUNY in preconsidered resolutions. So I'm voting no on preconsidered resolution 502 and on Intro 470A, and I vote aye on all. The rest.
Thank you. Krishnan.
Aye on all.
Lee.
Aye on all.
Lewis.
I vote aye.
Marte.
Aye.
Meili.
[inaudible]
Menon.
Aye on all.
Moya.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Narcisse.
Aye.
Nurse.
Aye. Congratulations, everyone.
Ose.
I vote aye on all.
Palladino.
I vote aye on all except for preconsidered Reso 502, Intro 470A. Thank you.
Thank you. Wrestler.
Aye.
Richardson Jordan.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say something about Elijah Muhammad Way, because that's in my district. We got the signatures, and it's long overdue. And I just want to say that it's actually not okay, family. By family, I mean human family. It's actually not okay to erase black leaders who are not pleasing to white people. It actually is way overdue. So I profoundly vote aye. It is not...
It is not okay to sanitize Black history and Black leadership. I profoundly vote aye on Elijah Muhammad Way, and aye on all.
Riley.
Aye.
Rivera. Excuse me. Salamanca.
Aye on all.
Sanchez.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
I'd also like to celebrate the life of Dr. Thomasina Buschby, who is, we are renaming a street after in our district. She was a longtime servant of the Community Board Five. She was on Morris Heights Health Center's board. She was longtime professor of Monroe College and just someone who gave so much of herself to the community. So I'm very honored that we can do this for our community on behalf of Dr. Buschby, and with that, I vote aye.
Schulman.
Aye on all.
Stevens.
Aye on all.
Ung.
Aye on all.
Aye on all, and I'd like to disclose on the record, my brother is a board member of Samaritans New York, and my husband is the Deputy Commissioner for DEP.
Thank you. Vernikov.
Aye on all, except no on 470A, pre-considered Reso 502, and I abstain from 897A. Thank you.
Thank you. Williams.
Just disclosing for the record that I'm a CUNY student, and I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Juan.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Jaeger.
Aye on all, with the exception of introduction 470, on which I vote no, and I abstain on Intro 897 and resolution 502. Thank you.
Thank you. Borelli.
Thank you. I will vote no on pre-considered Reso 502, no on Intro 470A, and aye on all the rest.
Powers.
I vote aye.
Speaker Adams.
Permission to explain my vote?
You have permission.
Thank you so much, Majority Leader. I just wanted to lift up, it is Black History Month, and I wanted to lift up a few of the street co-namings that we've wanted to do for so long. I'm just going to lift up a couple of them. One was already mentioned, and that's Clifford Glover Road. I think we all remember. If we don't, then we should definitely look it up, those of you who are newer than some of us in this room, who Clifford Glover was and how he died so brutally. I also wanted to mention Carmichael Way. This is very significant to the Southeast Queens community. We that have been in Southeast Queens for a very long time remember the famed Carmichael's Diner, owned by the brothers Carmichael, Benjamin and King, from South Carolina, where my own family hails from. They operated their diner for decades, and Carmichael's was a staple in Southeast Queens in my own district. It's actually where my parents took me to lunch when I graduated from Bayside High School. So it is my honor to have a street co-naming to remember them. And I also wanted to lift up Cecilia Owen Cox. She smashed gender barriers in the fire department. She was one of the original 41 women hired in 1982. She was a Black female firefighter. She was the first woman assigned to a ladder company and the first to be a ladder company chauffeur. She opened many, many doors and was extremely brave. So she was brave not only going to the firehouse as a Black woman, but she also exhibited bravery by standing up for other women. She was one of the women who came forward to complain about sexual assault in the fire department. And we remember her, and we are so honored to lift her up by way of a street co-naming in the district. She inspired dozens of women to become firefighters, and we look at her as a beacon to continue that tradition even in her death. So very proud of the street co-namings in my community in the Great 28. Also wanted to mention the founder of Sikhism, Guru Nanak. We will lift him up as well by renaming, co-naming a street in District 28, Guru Nanak Way. Thank you so much for your attention. I vote aye on all.
Thank you. All items on today's general order calendar adopted by a vote of 49 in favor, zero against, and zero abstentions, with the exception of resolution 502, adopted by a vote of 42 in favor, six against, and one abstention. Intro 470A, adopted by a vote of 42 in favor, seven against and zero abstentions. And Intro 897, adopted by a vote of 47 in favor, zero against, and two abstentions. We will now move to the introduction and reading of bills.
All bills have been referred to committees as indicated on today's agenda.
Thank you. We are now going to move into the discussion of today's resolutions. We have a number of folks signed up to speak. I will first call on Councilmember Lee, and will be followed by Councilmember Schulman.
Good afternoon, Madam Speaker, Majority Leader, and colleagues. It is an honor and privilege for Councilmembers Ung, Krishnan, Juan, Hanif, and I to pass our resolution today, calling upon the Department of Education to recognize Diwali as an official holiday for our students. And I also want to give a heartfelt thank you and shout out to our amazing colleagues in this chamber who supported and cosponsored this legislation. And of course, also want to thank our state colleagues who are carrying this bill. I know we have Assemblymember Jennifer Rajkumar, who's here with us today, carrying it on the Assembly side. And thank you to Senators Joseph Adabo and John Liu, who are carrying it on the Senate side. And this is not just a victory for the hundreds of thousands of New Yorkers who are Hindus, Sikhs, Jains, and Buddhists, who every year have to make the difficult choice between going to school or celebrating an important holiday with their families. But it is historic step forward for the larger AAPI community of 1.1 million New Yorkers. I know that the addition of the Lunar New Year holiday that was fought for many years was a huge victory for the community, and it was historic. And now adding Diwali will help foster that understanding and respect for our histories and cultures. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Schulman, followed by Councilmember Williams.
I am a proud cosponsor of resolution 164 to make Diwali a school holiday. I want to thank my colleague Linda Lee for introducing this resolution and everybody else who has gone on it. Making Diwali a school holiday was part of my campaign platform when I ran in 2021, and I am so glad it is getting closer to reality. And I also want to acknowledge Assemblymember Jennifer Rajkumar, who represents part of my district, who has been steadfast in her commitment to make Diwali a New York City school holiday in the New York State Legislature. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Williams, followed by Councilwoman Stevens.
I am thrilled to have introduced resolution 488 as a Delta. This resolution is very close to my heart, and I'm excited to have introduced this alongside my sorority, Majority Whip Selvina Brooks-Powers, with support from fellow councilmembers Riley, Farias, and Krishnan. Today, we are calling on the Council of the City of New York to recognize the contributions of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated to public service by designating March 3 annually as Delta Day in the City of New York. We chose March 3 because on March 3, 1913, founding Delta member Osceola McCarthy Adams led fellow Deltas down Pennsylvania Avenue in Washington DC in a march for women's voting rights at a time where Black women were discouraged from participating. This was our sorority's first public act in a century-plus-long history of civil rights and activism. Oh my gosh, my time. Our illustrious organization has made many contributions to the well-being of the city, state, and nation. This recognition is long overdue. I'll skip over the fact that we have 300,000 members and over 1,000 collegiate and alumni chapters. I want to just thank Regina for her intentionality in drafting this resolution, and special shout out to my sororors who have joined us here on this historic day in the chambers. We look forward to hosting you this April for our official Delta Day at City Hall, and encourage my colleagues to come out and meet members during that time. Thank you so much, Majority Leader.
That was good, quick reading. Well done. We'll now go to Councilmember Brooks Powers, and then we'll go to Council, oh, sorry, Councilwoman Stevens and Councilwoman Brooks Powers.
I come into the chambers once again, as I show up every time, as a Black woman, a daughter of a Black woman, a mother of a Black woman, a city council member in a borough led by a Black woman, Vanessa Gibson, a member of the First Majority Council led by a Black woman, Adrienne Adams, and most importantly, all the Black women who trailblazing all across the city. The essence of Black magic shall be celebrated each and every day as Black women suppress boundaries and continuously exemplify excellence in its all facets of life. This day shall be stand as a symbol as we uplift current and future generations of Black Girl Magic. Our stories, our journeys, our strides, our success will no longer be silenced or overlooked. From this day on, Black Girl Magic will shine light on all women of color. It is my honor to get and vote and pass resolution 486 today, which will recognize the accomplishments and issues faced by Black women by designating February 15 annually as Black Girl Magic Day in the City of New York. Thank you.
Yes, Black Girl Magic.
Thank you. Councilwoman Stevens. We'll now hear from Councilwoman Brooks Powers, followed by Councilwoman Farias.
I think it's fitting that during this Black History Month, where we serve in the first-ever woman-led majority, that we will pass two important resolutions today. I must thank my colleagues, Councilmember Stevens and my soror, Councilmember Williams, for their work on two resolutions I'm so proud to be a cosponsor of today. Reso 486, recognizing February 15 as Black Girl Magic Day, and Reso 488, which would designate March 6 as, March 3, excuse me, as Delta Day in honor of my sorority, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. As an almost 18-year member of my illustrious sisterhood, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, I am especially humbled by our rich history our organization continues to build upon. 110 years ago, our organization took part in our very first public act, fighting for women's voting rights. New York City is home to the first alumni chapter, and I am so proud of the work our members continue to do in their communities on a collegiate and alumni level, right here in the greatest city in the world. To my sororors in the balcony and to those watching virtually, we are our founders' dreams personified. For me, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated is a community of Black women that has helped shape my own magic. Black women have always had to fight to make space for ourselves and others, and we draw strength from being in a community with one another. That's why I am proud to be a Delta, and that is why I'm so proud to serve in this city council alongside so many amazing Black women. You all inspire me every day, and I am blessed to do this work with you, even the AKA next to me.
Councilmember.
So happy Black Girl Magic Day is here, and happy Delta Day. Thank you.
I'm going to let, I'm going to let you and the Speaker settle the beef over there. We'll now go to Councilmember Farias, and will be followed by Councilmember Hanif.
With 14 cosponsors, I'm excited to say that after this meeting, Mother Language Day will be recognized by the City of New York. February 21 is a federal holiday in Bangladesh that commemorates those who lost their lives fighting in the Bangla language movement. The UN's Educational, Scientific, and Cultural Organization proclaims this day as an international Mother Language Day, and it is about time New York City recognizes the holiday. Promoting the diversity of our city's languages ensures that the next generations of New Yorkers can learn and practice important traditions, and that we can pass on these traditions and continue to fight the long-lasting impact of colonialism in our shared communities. Thank you to co-prime sponsor, Councilmember Shahana Hanif, and the cosponsors Caban, Juan, Hudson, Krishnan, Dinowitz, Williams, Ose, Aviles, Marte, Lewis, Menon, and Sanchez for your support. Shout out to my community who is in the balcony today. Thank you to Mazeda for all your hard work. And finally, Happy Mother Language Day. Lastly, really quickly, I'd like to say congrats to my colleagues, Councilmembers Brooks Powers and Williams, on honoring Delta Day from this AKA, and to CM Stevens, designating Black Girl Magic Day. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Hanif, followed by Councilmember Krishnan.
Thank you. As the first Bangladeshi city council member and daughter of Kensington, now Little Bangladesh, the largest Bangladeshi and working-class community in Brooklyn, which I proudly represent, I am thrilled that resolution 474 commemorating Matribhasha Divush, Mother Language Day, is on today's agenda. I want to thank Councilmember Amanda Farias for her leadership on this resolution, which I am proud to co-sponsor, co-prime sponsor. New York City is home to the largest Bangladeshi community, and we are a community that is visible and engaged in all facets of city life. This resolution is a bold statement from our city that we stand with the Bangladeshi community in our never-ending struggle for language justice. The Bangla language movement in Bangladesh was a political uprising to speak, read, and write in Bangla without persecution, and for it to be used in government documents. The revolution for true language justice continues here, and I'm proud that so many of my colleagues here understand that language is political and an issue of survival and care. Bhashar ne bichar joduri abong jibon rakhakari. City Councilmember Pode, amra nishrit korte chay, je protiti immigrant, jeno e shahartike apan bolle mon korte pare, ar tader shangskriti o konthosor, shadin bhabe prakash korte pare tader bhashay. Ashun e bhashadivush, amra amader matribhashay katha boli, abong mane rakhie, je amader bhasha, amader khomota, community khomota. I encourage my colleagues to vote in favor of resolution 474.
Thank you. Just hold your applause. Thanks. We're going to now, last person we have signed up is Councilmember Krishnan. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Majority Leader. I wanted to speak on two resolutions today. As the first Indian-American ever elected to our New York City Council in its history, I am so proud to join Councilmember Lee and so many others in our resolution to make Diwali a school holiday in New York. This is a holiday that means so much to so many of our South Asian communities across religions, and it is long overdue for our growing South Asian population to finally recognize Diwali as a school holiday, so that so many in this city, like my own children, can celebrate a holiday without having to make a decision between celebrating it and school, as I had to do growing up. I couldn't be prouder, and I want to congratulate the leadership of Councilmember Lee with this resolution, and I'm so proud to join her and so many of my colleagues today in pushing for Diwali to be a school holiday, and joining in the efforts of our state colleagues as well, like Assemblymember Rajkumar, who's here, too, in their efforts as well. So thank you, and looking forward to finally having Diwali be a school holiday in New York. I also would like to speak in representing Jackson Heights and Elmer's Queens, another large and vibrant Bangladeshi community, speak in support of the resolution by our colleague, Councilwoman Farias, for International Mother Language Day on February 21. For the Bangladeshi community, this day marks the anniversary of when the people of Bangladesh fought for recognition for the Bangla language. We honor that fight to keep our cultures alive by promoting the preservation and protection of all languages used by people. Queens is the most linguistically diverse place on earth and is one of the most ethnically diverse counties in the United States. Queens is the future, and as you say in Bangla, a favorite poem of mine to Ekla Chalore. I want to say thank you so much, especially to so many advocates who had fought for this resolution this day, including Sister Mazeda, Udin, who is here today in our gallery, and of course, the leadership of Councilmember Farias. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't have anyone else signed up. Is there anyone else who wants to speak on resolutions or general discussion? General resolutions, what Councilman Ose.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I'll be brief. You know, as Chair of the Committee on Cultural Affairs, Libraries, and International Intergroup Relations, I get to hold hearings on some of the most amazing resolutions that we see in this body, including, you know, Councilmember Farias's resolution in terms of Mother Language Day, Councilmember Stevens's bill or resolution on Black Girl Magic Day. And one of my favorites that I've ever heard is Councilmember Natasha Williams and Selvina Brooks-Powers's resolution recognizing the contributions of Delta Sigma Theta. My office is run by a Delta, Naomi Hopkins, and I am so proud, oh, I don't know if you were kidding. And I'm so proud to be able to vote it out of committee for this amazing Black woman in Delta that really makes our office run as smoothly as it does, even though she talks to her sororities all day on the phone. I can hear through the walls. She's great, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on today's resolutions? Okay, seeing none. We'll now have a voice vote on the resolutions today. If you wish to vote against or abstain from any of today's resolutions, please notify the Legislative Documents Unit by email or by approaching the day as before the vote. I will now read the resolutions into the record. Resolution 164 calls on the New York City Department of Education to establish Diwali as an official holiday for New York City public school students. Will all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 474 recognizes February 21 as Mother Language Day in the City of New York, which honors the importance of the Bengali, Bangla language of Bangladeshis everywhere and promotes the acceptance of linguistic and cultural diversity in our communities. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 486 recognizes the accomplishments of and issues faced by Black women by designating February 15 annually as Black Girl Magic Day in the City of New York. Will all those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 488 recognizes contributions of Delta Sigma. Resolution 488 recognizes contributions of Delta Sigma Theta to public service by designating March 3rd annually as Delta Day in the City of New York. All those in favor, please say aye. Please mark the Speaker as aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We're now gonna move into today's general discussion. We have a number of folks signed up. We are gonna start with Councilmember Barron.
Thank you very much. My colleagues, I rise to say and acknowledge two great, great black women whose birthday is today, February 16th. One was a teacher for 20, 36 years in the Board of Education and a great leader of our community. She was in this body here and also in the State Assembly. One of the greatest black women I have ever met in my life. And that is my strong, black, beautiful warrior queen wife, Inez Barron. Happy birthday, sweetheart. The second was my chief of staff, another strong, powerful black woman, Sister Viola Plummer of the December 12th Movement. Today is her birthday as well, so congratulations and happy birthday. I also am rising because I have a resolution in with the public advocate, Jomani Williams. We want to have Wall Street and Pearl Street, some signage there that indicates that's where the first enslaved Africans came in to build New York City. You know, New York City started off as New Amsterdam with the Dutch, and then they stole this land from the Algonkin people, indigenous people, the Lanapi indigenous people, then stole us to build this capitalist economy, and now y'all don't want to pay us reparations. But that's how New York City started off. As a matter of fact, Peter Stuyvesant, Stuyvesant High School, he said he could have beaten the English who took over New York City in 1664. They called it New Amsterdam. They changed it to New York because of the Duke of York. But Peter Stuyvesant said he would have beaten the English if he didn't have to feed his 200 enslaved Africans all that food. So we just wanted to remind you of the establishment of this city council 370 years ago, and also, New York City 300 and some odd years ago was founded on the theft of land from the indigenous people and the enslavement of African people. So support this resolution.
Thank you, Councilmember. We'll now go to Councilmember Lee. We'll be followed by Councilmember Nurse.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Majority Leader, Madam Speaker, and colleagues. Today, it is my honor to introduce Intro 930 alongside Education Chair Rita Joseph, Councilmembers Sandra Ung and Shekhar Krishnan, to require the Department of Education to distribute information regarding phone interpretation services for students. New York is a city of immigrants. 3 million of our residents are foreign-born, hailing from over 200 countries. Almost half of our city speaks a language other than English. Our city and education system should also reflect that. We can and we should accommodate the linguistic needs of every family to ensure that our children can receive a quality education on their road to a brighter future. So I appreciate your support as we pursue more language access across our city schools. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to Councilmember Nurse, followed by Councilmember Hanks.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, I'm proud to introduce two pieces of legislation that will move our city and state closer to guaranteeing housing for all. The first is Resolution 506, calling for the state legislature to pass and the governor to sign the Good Cause Eviction Bill, long, long, long overdue. Good Cause would protect nearly 784,000 New York City renter households against predatory rent strikes and unjust evictions. It would compel landlords to justify rent hikes greater than 3% for better conditions without fear of retaliatory evictions. It would also guarantee lease renewals to most market-rate tenants, which would stem the flow of households entering into the shelter system. The need for Good Cause could not be clearer. This past January, New York City rent hit record highs. 54% of all low-income tenants saw rent increases last year, which was a 15-point increase from 2021. Among market-rate tenants who had increases last year, only 32% saw any improvements to actually justify the increase. As we face unprecedented rental pressures, Good Cause eviction is the single greatest protection we can give to tenants and residents to stop the flood of people into our shelters. I know many of you are eager to see Governor Hochul sign Good Cause into law. The second bill I'm introducing, Intro 932, would compel the city to create a one-time feasibility study on developing a municipal social housing development agency. I know many of you are in support of this, and we're looking forward to passing this soon. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to Councilmember Hanks, followed by Councilwoman Brayu.
Thank you. Today, I'm proud to introduce my bill, Intro 928, which will require the Department of Education to report on funding for restorative justice programming and services within our schools throughout our city. As you are all aware, violence in our schools is a serious pervasive issue. Effective restorative justice programming in schools is necessary to ensure the solution focuses on repairing harm with an emphasis on learning and community involvement. In addition to requiring the DOE to report on amount of funding provided, the bill will also require reporting on specific restorative justice programs and services if such programs and services are utilized by students in the applicable year. I hope by passing this bill, we will work to ensure that restorative justice programming remains properly funded and properly utilized to reduce instances of violence in our school system. And I encourage you to sign on to Intro 928. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to Councilmember Brayu, followed by Councilmember Kaban.
Good afternoon and thank you, Majority Leader. Today, I'm introducing two important pieces of legislation relating to Right to Counsel and pay parity for Right to Counsel attorneys. The first piece of legislation, Introduction 921, would require the Office of Civil Justice to prepare an annual estimate of the funding needed to pay Right to Counsel attorneys, a comparable salary with the Law Department attorneys. This estimate would be extremely useful in advocating for pay parity, which is crucial if we want to retain lawyers we're otherwise losing to the private sector. Secondly, Resolution 499 would call upon the New York State Legislature to introduce and pass and the governor to sign legislation that would require the Office of Court Administration, which sets the calendar for these eviction cases, to manage the housing docket and create an upper limit of how many housing cases can be placed on the calendar per month. I can't stress just how important this is. Right now, the Right to Counsel Coalition estimates that some 13,000 cases are moving forward where tenants who are entitled to an attorney never receive one. This is in clear conflict with the intent of the Right to Counsel law that was passed by this body. And it's imperative that we continue to fight for this issue and support this groundbreaking protection that has since been replicated in other localities across the nation. Let me repeat, no cases in housing court should proceed without a right to counsel. And right now, we're seeing that happen too many times. And I think that as a body, we need to be able to address that, addressing pay parity, and making sure that our lawyers have the capacity to address the eviction crisis that we're facing. I urge you to sign on to both of these pieces of legislation and support tenants in this fight. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll hear from Councilmember Kaban, followed by Councilwoman Marte.
Thank you. Today, alongside Members Rivera and Hanif, I'm introducing Intro 925. And the idea behind it is simple. All people deserve to be spoken of as people. The problem is that, again and again, in our city's charter and administrative plumbing and building codes, so many times that this bill needed to be over 80 pages to identify them all, we are describing people in such a way as to portray them as something other than, something less than. Precious, beloved human beings entitled to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. We're describing them as inmates and prisoners. And I want to point out two problems with these descriptions. The first is that it's dehumanizing to call people what's been done to them rather than what they are. That is, the people who are confined in cages on Rikers Island and elsewhere are not in their own personal selves as an essential individual quality inmates or prisoners. Rather, they are human beings, New Yorkers, our neighbors, our friends, our loved ones. That they are caged tells you nothing about them and a lot about the society incarcerating them. The second problem is that this language facilitates the denial of their basic human rights. It would be unforgivable to subject our neighbors, friends, and loved ones to torture, deprivation, and refusal of basic medical attention. But let's be honest, to do those things to inmates or prisoners, that might almost make sense. In this way, using those terms acts as a tool for fortifying and expanding our disastrous system of mass incarceration. Words matter. If we want a city characterized by respect for the dignity and human rights of all, it's time we excise these dehumanizing terms from our city's charter and codes and replace them with humanizing language like "person incarcerated" and "person in custody." Last year, our colleagues at the state level took similar steps, and I for one don't want our city to lag behind Albany. So I urge all of my colleagues to support this important bill. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilwoman Marte, followed by Councilwoman Carr.
Today, I'm introducing Resolution 505, urging the city to implement an adaptive reuse strategy for the planned Manhattan Borough-Based Jail in Chinatown. Rikers Island must close as soon as possible, and the barbaric conditions of our carceral systems must change. However, even supporters of this proposal must admit that demolishing the existing jail in Chinatown and replacing it with the world's tallest jail is both financially and from a criminal justice angle unfeasible. Experts and advocates have proven adaptive reuse as the existing Manhattan Detention Center can meet the goals of the Borough-Based Jail Plan without doubling the size of the existing facility. Such as significant construction projects will have devastating environmental impact on a low-income immigrant community of Chinatown. Just this morning, there was clouds of smoke causing residents to cough. This resolution presents an alternative to this otherwise doomed project, and I look forward to, from the support of my colleagues and from City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll hear from Councilwoman Carr, followed by Councilwoman Brooks Powers.
Bon Pomeridio, collegi. Good afternoon, colleagues. I am proud to announce the return of the Italian Caucus of the City Council. I want to thank, I want to--
How do you like that?
I want to thank my colleagues in the caucus, Councilmembers Ariola, Borelli, Brandon, Gennaro, Holden, and Palladino for their support of me as Chair. I want to say grazie tanto to the Speaker for supporting the return of this longstanding institution, and in particular, Jeremy John and Carlos Bianto for dealing with my enthusiasm over it for the last several months. And I look forward to having many celebrations that promote the history, culture, and contributions of the Italian-American community to our city and our country right here in City Hall. And I promise, no matter what they are, there will be food. So, thank you so much.
Count me in. As the Chair of the Irish Caucus, I look more forward to your food than mine. But congratulations. We'll now go to Councilwoman Brooks Powers, and we'll be followed by Councilwoman Vilas.
I just quickly want to thank Councilmember Vilas for introducing three pieces of legislation today to address the issues caused by trucking and last-mile facilities, all of which I'm proud to co-sponsor. Truck traffic has exploded in New York City in the last few years. Projections suggest more than $1 billion in e-commerce packages will be delivered annually to New York City by 2024. I've seen how this has impacted my district. The JFK Industrial Business Zone experiences some of the highest volumes of trucking activity in the city. This has directly impacted communities next door whose residents deal with trucks parked illegally on their streets, noise, and air pollution, and additional congestion. The city can and must do more to help our neighborhoods impacted by truck traffic. I know Councilmember Vilas understands these concerns and has seen firsthand how trucking and last-mile facilities have impacted areas like Red Hook and Sunset Park. I thank her for advancing this legislation. I will be holding a hearing on trucking in the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure within the next few months to talk about how we hold the city accountable, how we hold the industry accountable, and how we, as a council, address this problem and make a difference in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll hear from Councilwoman Vilas, and finally, Councilwoman Brewer.
So, thank you so much. Today, I'm introducing three more pieces of legislation to address the rapid and unchecked expansion of last-mile e-commerce distribution facilities. For those of you who may not know, the last-mile business model follows the longstanding tradition of exploitation and extraction of communities of color and low-income communities. Take a district like mine, like the one I represent, a mixed-use district that has bore the brunt of every manner of polluting infrastructure in New York City. A waste transfer station, peaker plants, cement plants, oil and gas, and the beloved BQE, not. Combined with age-old discriminatory land use and housing policies at a cultural trend that expects the delivery of goods instantaneously, and we suddenly hold one of the largest concentrations of polluting facilities with no regulation, no mitigation, and no regard for the people that live in the communities that have to deal with the thousands of additional tractor-trailers, sprinter vans, delivery trucks, and cars per day. What might be an enormous opportunity for our city to move in the direction of a just transition for valuable green manufacturing and healthy development after decades of disinvestment and neglect is instead squandered and sold to corporate behemoths. Our city's lack of planning has resulted in corporations choking off access to the waterfront, filling our streets with truck congestion or air pollution, and pushing out the opportunity for growth and true local manufacturing and a green, sustainable manufacturing. We must stop propagating this model of extraction under the guise that the problem of last mile is too complex for our city planners. Not only has let the last-mile coalition put forward a text amendment proposal to the Department of City Planning, we have also proposed a good number of short-term mitigation efforts to improve the health and well-being of our community. I hope you will stand with us, and thank you to all the co-sponsors for your support.
Thank you. And last but not least, we'll hear from Councilwoman Brewer.
Thank you. I just want to mention that in terms of the co-street namings, we have a bill, Intro 227, which will require the co-naming biographical information to be made publicly available so all New Yorkers and visitors know more about the people who earn this honor. Obviously, some people know the major names, celebrities, but they don't know the great community leaders and heroes. And I hope that we can pass this bill. It has had a hearing. Number two, I want to join Councilmember Nurse in the support of Good Cause legislation. I think we all receive, as I do, lots of calls from people who are market-rate and for no good reason, they are being told to leave. Many of these buildings have, are large. We're not talking about smaller buildings, and this would be a way to keep people in their homes. They could certainly be evicted if there was a reason, but it'd have to be a real reason and not just because the rent is going up. I also want to say that I want to thank Councilmember Sanchez because there'll be a lot of discussion about housing bills on February 23rd, including Land Bank, which I am sponsoring. And I mention that because it is apparently, many states, many cities in the state of New York and cities around the country already have a land bank in existence. And so we're way behind the curve, and it would help make sure that we have affordable housing in perpetuity. And I too want to thank everyone who's supported co-naming for Al Van. I served with him in the city council for 12 years, and he was definitely a very, very special man. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else signed up to speak? Seeing none, I will now call on Speaker Adrian Adams to close today's stated meeting.
Thank you, Majority Leader. The stated meeting of February 16th, 2023 is hereby adjourned.